Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the regular scheduled Apex Town Council meeting for Tuesday, September 9, 2025. And before we get moving with the business tonight, we'll move into the invocation. And tonight, what I'd like to do is have a moment of peace together. So if you would, please join me in a moment of solace and peace. Thank you. Thank you so much. If you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'd like to go ahead and recognize special guests that are in the chamber tonight. We'll start with America's finest. We have Apex Fire Department, Apex Police Department protecting the peak of the living. So thank you for being here. We also have the president of Wake Technical Community College, Dr. Scott Ross. Thanks for being here. And of course, we have the vice president, Development and Strategic Partnerships of Wake Technical Community College. That's Mr. Matt Smith. So we're here for him later. All right, we'll move on now to the consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine to be enacted by one motion with the adoption of the consent agenda and without discussion. A council member requests discussion of an item. The item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The consent agenda is in front of you, colleagues. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve?
Motion, Mayor Protem. Second, Gant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move now to updates by town manager.
And just like that. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and those in the audience. Good turnout tonight for my report. Love it. I do have quite a few things to talk about, and I do have a specific utility billing update. I'm going to do that last because it's a pretty significant, sizable update. I'll start with an update on Olive Chapel, the road. Utility providers, and this came from DOT, and I believe they did a press release today. So most of the information I'm going to share with you is in that press release. Utility providers are mobilized and onsite to perform the utility relocation. You can remember that was one of the delays is looking at, we actually have a water line in the area. Duke Energy has power lines, and so there's some utility relocates that need to be done. NC DOT is working to complete the right-of-way acquisition and the rights of entry as well to complete the construction LET project package. They anticipate October of this year to do the LET package, so kind of kick it off with anticipated reopening for traffic in January, so late January. So we had heard early on it might be a lot longer than that, and I know that is going to be a long time, but I think that's a lot better than it could have been. So right now, we're looking at late January for reopening to traffic. They do have a couple of items that can impact that. They are still trying to have good contact with two of four property owners in the area. So we are going to try and assist with that, and we'll get with council and see if we have some good contacts there to help them get with a couple of property owners that haven't responded as of yet. And then the other is making sure that we stay on track with the utility relocates, the biggest of which is Duke Power. So we're working with them as well. So knock on wood, January, but there are a couple of things we need to still work through with DOT. The public safety message, we're still hearing reports that specifically kids are going into the area and playing around the depressed area. We do want to reiterate on DOT's behalf that it is not safe to be in that area. They've kind of collapsed more of the ground on purpose because it looks supported, but it wasn't. But there still could be areas of instability around the depressed area. So we are encouraging people to not go take a look at it, not go walk up next to it, respect the barricades and the perimeter that are in place to keep everybody safe. So if you can help us with that message, we would appreciate it. Events, we've got two events to mention. Patriot Day, which I know we've got a proclamation coming up in a little bit. That'll be Thursday, September 11th at the Apex Service Memorial at the corner of Saunders in Salem at 9:30 a.m. And then Festa Italiana is coming up on September 20th, and that will be here on Town Hall Campus and out on Hunter Street, and that's from 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. on Saturday, September 20th. That takes care of events and other updates. Now utilities. And I even brought visual aids if we need them. So we did do a video that we released from the town on Friday. That was with kind of a big breakthrough that we had with getting to the bottom of the cycle lengths that were printed on bills. If you are interested in that video, it's on our YouTube channel. We also posted it on Facebook, and I know several members shared that video as well. Previous bills displayed incorrect service date ranges, which then also fed into the number of days for that billing period. And then that kind of threw off if you were calculating your daily average or looking at why was my one cycle 47 days and the other 18? In actuality, those cycles were closer to 30 days each, and so they were closer in cost. So the message is the dollars were correct, the dates were incorrect on those cycles. That has been corrected going forward on our paper bills. There's also an issue, we're working with our vendors on the My Account portal. The same thing, the inaccurate billing days are displaying in a column on the portal. We are aware of that issue, and we're working with the vendor to correct where it's feeding that information from into. So a couple of issues working there. Meter replacements. For customers with recently replaced water meters, the bill's usage column is reflecting only the new meters data. So you're getting your bill, and it's saying I only use 700 when you actually use 2700. It's because the bills where they're pulling the information, it's only pulling the new meter data and not the old. But the bill is accurate that it is on the total usage. So we're working on the design of the bill and to get the vendor to display it differently so it can be new meter data and old meter data. But as of now, again, the dollars are correct. The data is only showing though for the new meters and not the old meters. The some metrics, I know council member Gant asked, and we are looking at a whole slew of metrics that we can bring to you. I have a few things to share with you this evening. The average for the last six months, when you look at our billing cycle length, is right around 30 days. So that may seem like, oh, no. But again, it's because of the inaccurate printed, may look like your billing cycles are longer, but the actual average for the last six months is around 30 days. I say around because it was 29.8 and maybe 30.2. So we're calling that around 30 days on average for the last six months. SEW is our portal support company with the My Account Portal. We can report that customer calls have decreased by 15.4% from July to August. So and most of those calls were centered around retrieving new account numbers and getting established on the My Account Portal. So we are seeing a decrease in that activity. We have achieved, we are right around 22,000 customers that are now registered with the My Account Portal, which is more than we had in any of our previous systems. So that number is going great. And again, reminder that we do encourage people to register in the portal because that is the quickest way to get to the information. And when there's a tweak in billing, that'll happen first on that portal versus the whole paper system that takes quite a bit of time. Ask Apex, our customer service arm within the town. We can report that for the week of 9-2 to 9-5, the average wait time improved by 34%, dropping from, if you remember, the last time I reported, it was between seven and eight minutes. So it was actually seven minutes, 30 seconds, and that has dropped to four minutes, 55 seconds. So right around five-minute wait time on our Ask Apex customer service line. The Barry Dunn report, the final report was received. I did submit that to council today through email, so you probably haven't had a chance. It's been a busy day, but that report was sent out to council today. Within a week, we will have that posted on our website. The reason we're putting, as is typical with any kind of review or audit type document, there is a staff response that you would pair with it, kind of an action plan or things that we've done as a result of that. So we'll pair it with that staff response, and we should have that on the website within the next week. Staffing updates. Our new finance director, I'm excited to mention this one again, starts Monday. He was actually here this week and is excited to be stepping into that role. So he will be here on Monday. Our utility billing manager has been here and is, has hit the ground running. So he is in the throes of it, and he's handling customer issues and working through some of our finance items. Temporary staff is in place. We also had interviews this week. They went really well, and we've begun to extend offers. We have four positions that we're looking to fill there. So those positions should have all offers in place by the end of this week. And then we continue to look at our temporary staff and are looking to increase our temporary staff there as well. So staffing perspective is going really well. That has been a big issue for us to try and bring in some relief to the staff that have been working on this for quite some time. Couple of other things, let's see. We are on pace of going to the recalculation review for bills. I want to say the number was around 179, 180 people that signed up to have their bill recalculated through our formal process. The average right now, 91% of those that have been reviewed have actually owed the town after that review. We again expect that number to climb as we complete, but we're currently at 91% we're considered under billed. The average due to Apex was $39.14. The average due to the customer was $7.37. We do, the way it was done, so Barry Dunn completed the review of those 179, then they provided those to the town for us to reconcile. We are about 50% through that reconciliation, and we anticipate that letters will begin this month to go out to the customers with the results. So we're about 50% done with our reconciliation, and then once that's completed, the letters will be issued and we'll have our final results. So that's where we're running with the third-party review from Barry Dunn. A few items we do want to acknowledge, there's been a lot of discussion around solar billing issues. We want to acknowledge that it's for good reason. There are some nuances to solar billing that are very, very detailed. So we are working with those customers and working on those issues to go through the different nuances. We've also received some feedback, and we're listening to this about the bill design. There are some quick changes that we can do to the bill design that we have submitted to the vendor to make those changes. And then there are some longer-term items that we want to customize for Apex. Typically with software products, there's like a canned bill. So we did tweak that a little bit, but there are certain parameters you can only tweak, and then beyond that, it's a complete change. So we are making some minor tweaks, and then we're going to submit for some bigger changes to the bill so they can be more transparent and more user-friendly, so to speak. So there's a lot of progress on all fronts. We continue to take feedback and work through the different issues. And with that, I believe that is all that I have.
Thank you so much. All right, any questions for Mr. Bossburg? Go ahead, now set the regular meeting agenda, and there is one change or recommendation. New business item number three through new business item number six will be deferred until September 23rd to allow additional review. All right, with that change, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Ziggman.
Second.
Second, Mayor Protem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll move now to presentations. Presentation one, Girl Scout Troop 619 Silver Award recognition. Ms. Kimberly Presley, if you would, please come up. Good to see you here tonight. And you have some amazing leaders with you, right?
Yes, I do.
All right, good deal.
And have you introduce yourselves, and then you can do your presentation.
You can talk to us if you want to.
Okay. Okay, come on over.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Olivia Presley, and I am part of Troop 619.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Caroline Olander, and I'm also part of Girl Scouts Troop 619.
Welcome, Caroline.
Hi, I'm Cameron Walls, and I'm also a part of Girl Scout Troop 619.
Hello there, I'm Evie Koffis, and I'm also a part of Troop 619.
All right, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Presley, and I am the troop leader for Girl Scout Troop 619.
Okay, all right. Do you have a presentation?
Okay. Troop 619 is a Girl Scout troop that was established in 2016 here in Apex. This is our 10th program year as a troop. We are a multi-level troop with members of various ages and Girl Scout levels. We are seniors, the oldest scouts in our troop. We love being role models for the younger girls. Our troop leader, Kimberly Presley, has been the leader since founding our troop and was here for every step of the way for our Silver Award.
The silver, the silver award is the highest award a girl can earn between sixth and eighth grade, and they can earn it between sixth and eighth grade, which highlights accomplishments and helping others. In order to earn this award, a scout must first have completed either a bronze award, cadet leadership award, or a cadet journey. Once the scout has completed the prerequisites, they can begin brainstorming ways to improve or solve the prop, solve a problem, develop a solution, and put the solution into motion. The goal of a silver award is to be a self- The goal of a Silver Award is to be a self-renewing, sustainable, and long-lasting part of our community that benefits offers.
The four of us have been working on our Silver Award project for the past two years. At first, we had a different project that initially didn't work out. However, things that didn't, however, the things that didn't work out with the project that we envisioned. The Silver Award Committee said that we could submit our report as it is, but we didn't feel satisfied and wanted to do something good to help our community. So instead of scrapping our initial project, we ended up pivoting into something a little bit different, which it was still somewhat in line with our initial plan. Our new project took us to Scotts Ridge Elementary School, where we met the principal, Mr. Evans, and discussed how we could help his school. We were interested in helping beautify the grounds, and Mr. Evans loved the idea, and he asked us to restore the United States mural that was on the playground.
Our project began with the, with the researching, initial planning, and scheduling phases. This involved looking into the types of materials we would need to restore the mural, how much everything will cost, and when and how much time the restoration would take. We assigned responsibility and leadership roles to our team members. The next step in this process was going out and purchasing the materials needed for this project, because we didn't have, we did not have much prior knowledge as to what materials we should use. We reached out to Rachel Wrights, a local mural artist in North Carolina. She gave us many tips on what to use in order for our work to last as long as possible, as well as how to properly prep the mural for the new paint, and how to care for after we eventually returned the care of the mural back over to Scotts Ridge.
After we secured our materials, we started the restoration process itself. On June twenty-first, we began working on the mural. First, we cleared out the weeds and the grass that had all creeped up into a little bit of the cracks between the concrete. And then we used bleached shins, got as much of the original paint off as we could. That way, we'd have a bit of a blank canvas for what we were gonna do. Early in the morning of June twenty-second, we began working on the actual painting process itself. It was very detailed, and we needed to do all the painting by hand. We accomplished the majority of the painting that day, but we left the final little details and touch-ups to the next day. Finally, on the twenty-third, we were able to do, we were in the final stretch of the beautification process. We finished painting the final few states and then added labeling onto them. This will allow all of the children attending Scotts Ridge to hopefully identify and learn the different states in the United States. The next day, we returned the keys to Mr. Evans and turned over all of the materials that we used. He said that the parents and students will be maintaining that area in the future.
We have various photos of us working, and unfortunately, there was a heat wave, and it was extremely sunny, but we were able to tough it out and continue working and finish And we got so much support from our community, and we were helped all along the way. And this is what it looked like when we were done.
All right, great job. A lot of great work for sure. Thank you so much for that presentation. And with that, I'm going to ask the council to join me up front. We have a presentation to you. All right, I want to recognize you. I do remember, it was really hot that day, but you were all out there getting it done. So this evening, we are super proud of you. You represented Apex very well, and I, with the council, would like to present to you this prestigious Peak Service Award. So I want to read it. I proudly recognize all of you for your hard work in beautifying the playground at Scotts Ridge Elementary School. Your dedication to leadership and commitment to making a lasting impact on your community is commendable and extremely noteworthy. All of you and several members of Girl Scout Troop Six-Nineteen worked to plan, research, raise funds, and meet with school staff to deliver an exceptional and detailed mural of the United States. This hand-painted work of art will serve as a reminder that our community continues to be the peak of good living because of thoughtful, kind, and amazing people like you. Signed this ninth day of September by yours truly, Mayor Jacques Gilbert. So here's your award, so this is for Evelyn. Congratulations, thank you so much. I asked for cookies, but she didn't bring any. All right, thank y'all so much, we appreciate it. Thank y'all so much. All right, thank you so much again. We move now to the second presentation tonight. This will be Hispanic Heritage Month twenty-twenty-five. We're really excited about that, and kicking us off with the proclamation and the unity reading would be Councilmember Ziegerman.
All right, this is the twenty-twenty-five proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated each year from September fifteenth through October fifteenth to recognize the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans with ancestors from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And?
Whereas the date of September fifteenth is significant because it's the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively. And?
Whereas Apex is proud to be home to a vibrant Hispanic community consisting of nearly five thousand residents who contribute greatly to the economy, culture, and well-being of the town. And?
Whereas drawing from the rich histories, Hispanic cultures are extremely diverse and lively, with focus centered on family, faith, cuisine, my favorite, music, dance, and much, much more. And?
Whereas the town is excited to host a learning lunch for Hispanic Heritage Month on September eighteenth at twelve P M. in the Senior Center, as well as the Latino Arts Festival on September twenty-seventh from three P M. to nine P M. in downtown Apex.
Now therefore, I, Jacques K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five through October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, Hispanic Heritage Month in the town of Apex, and urge all residents to participate in the upcoming events to learn more about Hispanic history and culture and experience the joy these celebrations bring. So I would like to call up Juan Ortega with Fiesta Christiana, Sarah Henson, Fiesta Christiana Attilia Angola, Fiesta Christiana and Peter Moran, local artists working with Apex for Hispanic Heritage Month, and Steven Lobos, Apex Baptist Church Spanish Pastor. And then, of course, our very own community engagement manager, Jimmy Torres. So please come up and accept the proclamation.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you tonight on your continued support for this event. I'm here to share some exciting news about the Latin Festival, a celebration that will bring families, neighbors, and friends for a full day of joy, unity, and cultural activities. This festival is more than an event. It is a chance to experience the richness of Latin America right here in our town. Through music, food, and traditions, we will be able to enjoy the diversity that makes our community stronger and more connected. Throughout the day, there will be a wide variety of activities for everyone. Livey dances, bands and live music, cultural activities for children, and most importantly, delicious food from different countries. So I invite everyone, residents, friends, and visitors, to join us for this year's Latin Apex Festival. Come with your families, bring your appetite, your dancing shoes, and enjoy a great time. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff for your dedication to supporting events that are make, make our community stronger. We welcome, we look for, look for, forward to seeing you at this festival. Thank you.
All right, the next proclamation we have tonight is Italian-American Heritage Month twenty-twenty-five, and first reading of the proclamation will be done by Councilwoman Killingsworth.
Italian-American Heritage Month twenty-twenty-five. Whereas Italian-American Heritage Month has been celebrated each October since nineteen-eighty-nine, when it was federally recognized by the United States Congress and then-President George H. W. Bush. And?
Whereas the United States has a strong connection with Italian-Americans throughout its history, with over sixteen million current U.S. residents being from Italian descent, including several thousand here in Apex. And?
Whereas the town of Apex is stronger, healthier, and more culturally diverse because of the, of its Italian-American residents and their contributions, and we are proud to celebrate their heritage alongside with them. And?
Whereas the Seventh Annual Fiesta Italiana will be held on September twentieth from eleven A.M. to seven P.M. along Hunter Street and Town Hall Campus, which seeks to invoke the feelings of an Italian street festival through a celebration of Italian cuisine, music, food, wine, and more. And?
Whereas we acknowledge that this year's Fiesta Italiana is celebrated in special honor and recognition of Miss Antoinette Toni Coitek, a resident of Apex who served on the Board of Directors for Fiesta Italiana and passed away far too soon earlier this year.
Now therefore, I, Jacques K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty-twenty-five, Italian-American Heritage Month in the town of Apex, and encourage residents to join us in celebrating the rich Italian culture in our town and in honoring the life and legacy of Mrs. Toni Coitek. So receiving the proclamation tonight is Anthony Coitek, spouse of the late Toni Coitek, and then Fran and Bob Januzzi, Enzo Martini, and Barbara White. So if you would, please come up and receive the proclamation.
There you go.
First of all, we would love to thank Apex for allowing us to bring our Italian Festival here. The first year, everybody that joined us, all of our vendors, all of our volunteers said, yuck, Apex, why? And after we had our first one, everybody said to us, never go anywhere else but Apex. Now, we all know it's been, it's, it's hard. It's hard to put on a festival, like you all know that. Oh, I call the mayor all the time, I text him all the time. He always says, calm down. We thank the police force, we thank the firemen for everything they do. We have a very small team, but this small team of festive members puts on a festival that last year brought fifteen thousand people to Apex, and we are happy to be back again this year. So thank you for your support.
We'll move on now to Patriot Day twenty-twenty-five. We have a proclamation, and kicking us off tonight for this proclamation is Mayor Pro Tem Ed Gray.
The proclamation for Patriot's Day twenty-twenty-five. Whereas on September eleventh, two thousand and one, our nation was inexorably changed after terrorist attacks and terrorists hijacked commercial planes and crashed them into the Twin Towers and the Pentagon, with another believed to be aimed for the Capitol Building brought down in Pennsylvania and a Pennsylvania field by brave passengers. And?
Whereas Patriot Day serves as an annual reminder of this great tragedy and an opportunity to remember and honor the over three thousand lives that were lost in this senseless act of cruelty and violence. And?
Whereas the scene at the fallen Twin Towers was calamitous and took over ninety-one thousand rescue, recovery, and cleanup workers to evacuate fifteen thousand people, recover bodies for their families, and clean up the scene, all while being exposed to dangerous and hazardous conditions. And?
Whereas in addition to the thousands of innocent civilians lost to this attack, nine-eleven marked the single largest loss of first responders in a single day in American history, with the deaths of three hundred forty-three firefighters, seventy-one law enforcement officers, eight paramedics, and fifty-five military personnel. And?
Whereas the town of Apex honors the lives lost and the sacrifices made on that day twenty-seven years ago, twenty-four years ago, and invites the community to join us in remembrance at the annual Patriot Day ceremony at the Apex Service Memorial on Thursday, September eleventh at nine-thirty A.M.
Now therefore, I, Jacques K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, Patriot Day in the town of Apex. September 11th, 2025, Patriot Day in the town of Apex, and encourage residents to never forget the horrific events of 9/11 and show respect and appreciation for first responders in Apex and around the country. Receiving the proclamation tonight is Lee Harris, American Legion Commander and Members of the Apex Police and Fire Departments. If you would, please come up and receive the proclamation. Thank you.
Commander.
Everybody want to be in the second row? We're not starting second row.
It's probably Vegas group right now.
It's okay, you guys can dangle.
The prom stairs, you know, get more of an angle on here.
Let's have the front step somewhere just a little bit. There we go. I guess y'all can't move any farther forward than there.
Can we get the other...
Yeah.
Keep going.
I think this is the least we've ever had.
All right, we'll move on now to presentation number five, Resolution and Agreement Adopt a Unit Program Partnership between the town of Apex and 101st Airborne Division Unit of the Army, Chief Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I will be brief. I know you have a long agenda, but I do appreciate being able to bring this item to you because it's one of the times I get to bring a pretty cool new program to the town that we're proud of at the PD and proud to be a part of. So the action tonight is to bring to you a potential resolution agreement to join the Adopt a Unit Program. Fairly near and dear to me from my prior law enforcement experience, this is something we did that brought a lot of good relationships to the community, so I'm excited to bring it here to Apex. The purpose of the possible resolution here is to establish the town of Apex's adoption of golf company, 426th Brigade Support Battalion, 101st Airborne Division, the Screaming Eagles, as part of the America Supporting Americans Adopt a Unit Program. These programs strengthen the connection between Apex community and our armed forces, and it also affirms the town council's commitment to service, partnership, and support. So what is the ASA and the Adopt a Unit Program? Well, ASA is a group that is dedicated to building supportive connections between service members and civilian communities. The Adopt a Unit Program specifically matches towns, cities, or counties, in this case, obviously a town, with specific military units, and this group works with all branches of the military in an effort to provide ongoing adoption, support services to ensure long-term success of the unit itself and its integration into the community. The goal simply is to boost the morale within the unit and to create lasting meaningful bonds between soldiers and the communities. So Apex's role in this program, should you choose to adopt the resolution, is that volunteer staff from the Apex Police Department will manage and operate the program in its entirety. The activities will be coordinated along with community groups, businesses, and town employees. Examples of some of the support activities we'll engage in are providing care packages for military members during deployments, also for their families while they are deployed in a way, fundraising for deployment and return events, for which we've learned they have very little funds available, so this helps them to have significant events to say goodbye and hello to loved ones as they're coming and going from deployments, and then to provide needed holiday support for families. In fact, the unit that we are proposing to adopt will be deployed sometime between now and November and will be deployed throughout the holidays. So one of our first actions will be to get on top of serving their families in their absence and ensuring that the holiday is as good as it can be for families that are no doubt missing their loved ones during that time. All this is conducted on a volunteer basis, so there's no direct budget impact that we're coming to you with tonight. Benefits to the community and the unit? Well, this is the actual unit that we would be adopting here in photo. For the unit, they have reported tangible morale support during deployments and homecomings that is truly meaningful to their personnel. It also provides a personal connection to a civilian community that demonstrates that it values their service. We also found in my prior jurisdiction that this becomes a phenomenal recruiting tool down the road because we're establishing a clear line of support between the police and military, and as we know, the military make phenomenal police officers. So it's a bit of an untapped resource in a state that has such a large military presence for us. For the community, this pride in supporting America's service members is obviously a very big deal in the state of North Carolina, and so I think this is in line not only with the council's objectives, but also those of the state in general. It provides opportunities for civic groups, schools, and businesses to participate alongside police officers in supporting the military community, and it creates a strengthened sense of engagement, of civic engagement and national service for our community. So the request tonight of council is fairly simple, a possible motion to adopt a resolution establishing the town of Apex's adoption of golf company, 426th Brigade Support Battalion, 101st Airborne Division air assault, the famed Screaming Eagles, as part of the America Supporting Americans Adopt a Unit Program, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement for the same. This will formalize Apex's commitment to regularly engage and support activities for this group, and it ensures a lasting and meaningful partnership with our adopted unit. With that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have and appreciate the time.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. This is great, all the reasons you gave, and I think we just read a roll. We got, there's some other comments?
I mean, some comments? Like, I was elated when I saw this on the agenda. I just came back from Normandy doing the DDA tour stuff, and, you know, my daughters and family saw it, and, you know, hope everyone gets a chance to do it at some point in their lives. And 101st were the ones who flew in behind the lines on Utah Beach. I spent a day learning about them and the amazing stories that came out of that day. And to have this come in, this meeting, adopt this resolution is just a really neat coincidence and really awesome. Thank you for bringing this word.
Thank you.
I'll echo that. As a teenager, I read a lot about the Normandy invasion and especially the 101st Airborne Division, the pathfinders that dropped behind enemy lines to prepare a way for so many others, and, you know, the bravery of those units. So, yeah, I echo the sentiment that I was very excited to see this come forward, especially this particular unit, so I'm in full support.
I guess I've got to be the voice of contrary then, because I'm just trying to figure out, we couldn't find anybody down at the 82nd Airborne Division? No one from Bragg? Airborne?
I knew this was coming.
No, no, no. Always excited to have those air assault guys come around, but there's still legs, and if you know, you know.
I guess there would be a motion, right?
That would be a motion.
Second.
All right, motion second. Any other discussion?
That's awesome. Thanks.
All right. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it. All right, next presentation, the best community college in North Carolina, Wake Tech Community College. Matt Smith, Vice President of Development and Strategic Partnerships. Thanks for being here.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Grateful to be here as representing the 75,000 Wake Tech students. Did you get that, Alan? 75,000, the largest college/university in state, and as a 25-year Apex resident, I am doubly happy to be here to announce that Wake Tech is coming to Apex. I'm gonna, yeah, let's clap for that. I'm gonna yield the floor to our distinguished president, Dr. Scott Rawls, who's going to tee up our other colleague Chuck Scott to give you some details on the plan.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Mayor, council members. It's good to reach the peak after a long day today, so it's nice to be here, and we're very excited to be in Apex, coming to Apex. Wake Tech Community College takes great pride in being our community's college, and that means we take great pride in being Apex's community college and coming to a site near you very soon, so we're excited about that. Our journey here began because Joanna Helms, the Director of Economic Development, told us we need to be in Apex. Actually, that's only partially true. She did say that one, but we were already moving down this path to Apex, and the reason was, it was about four or five years ago, we were looking at what was our future. We have a site here in the western part of the county in Cary, but it's a smaller site. It has some parking challenges. It doesn't allow for some of the workforce development programs that we need to do, and so we started looking and kind of landed that we needed to be, we picked a spot, and it turned out that that was Veridia, and we kind of rode that through the process and eventually acquired 34 acres of land to be first tenant in acquiring in that Veridia Development Project. Things have evolved since we identified that site, since we made the purchase in 2023. One of the things that's involved in this part of the county, particularly just across the city line in Holly Springs, the growth of biopharma, which I suspect will cross over into Apex very soon, and so the new site for Wake Tech will be within four miles of four major sites for us that we're currently involved with CSL Securus, Amgen, their new site and their expansion, Fuji Films' new site and their expansion, and now the new Genentech site, and so we're heavily involved in providing the training as well as apprenticeship programs for those companies. That gives us some insight into what we need to initiate there in Apex. And then just this summer, you all heard the news that North Carolina Children's is coming to Apex. I think we were in this room when we heard that news, and we're very excited to be adjacent to North Carolina Children's. So what will happen is, our goal is, we'll race as quickly as we can to complete work. Our hope is by the summer of 2029. Love to get into the campus by the fall of 2029. More likely, it'll be towards the January of 2030 is the timeline. This next year, we'll be designing the first building there at Wake Tech, which will start with a real focus on biopharma and advanced manufacturing and a lot of the technical education, things that we need to have there, mechatronics, some automation that allows and supports the companies that are here and companies that are likely to grow around that, particularly in the life sciences area. We'll also be relocating all the operations that make it a campus, our library, our counselors, all the support areas, our classrooms, our science labs, also hoping to have some space that will allow for some community amenities. We'll also be the hub for our business programs, our small business and entrepreneurship programs will be hubbed at the new site, and if we can squeeze it in, we'll also move our simulation game design program to the area and bring our esports team this direction too, if we can make that all work within the first building, and so that's our goal. Our second building, probably you can count on, is going to have a pretty heavy healthcare focus, given our new neighbors there in Veridia, so that's the goal that we're setting up programmatically. Let me turn it over now to Chuck Scott, who's our Vice President of Facilities. He'll give you some insights into the new campus, the master plan that has now been developed, and as we transition into the actual planning for what will be the first facility at what will be referred to as the Conlon Western Wake Campus in honor of Mike Conlin and his family, a very generous donor to Wake Tech, who will, his funding will help support some of the initial structures there at the campus. So excited about coming to Apex, excited about being here, and we're very proud to be connected with Apex, and thanks to the town for all of your support all along the way. We're very appreciative. I'll turn it over to Chuck.
Good evening, Town Council and guests here tonight. Thank you for having us. Yeah, I'm just going to get into some of the details of our master plan, and so, you know, as Dr. Rawls mentioned, you know, we've got, we've got a great location here at the intersections of Interstate 540, US 1, and NC 55, right here in the Veridia Development, and within just a few miles of the four major biotech/biopharma companies that Dr. Rawls mentioned. And then, you know, even zooming kind of in a little tighter, you know, is the Veridia Development, and we are over on the right side of the page there, on the east side, in the 34-acre plot there, right coming into the development right off of Highway 55, and then as part of that Phase 1 East Village portion, and then over to the left side, on the west side, is our new neighbor, NC Children's, and then also right kind of in between is Dell Technologies. And so we've got a lot of great neighbors, both within the Veridia Development and as well as, you know, beyond in the region, and so we're excited about that, looking forward to the partnerships that we'll be able to have there for that. The other key piece of this is, this is the first phase. I've kind of highlighted that. This is the eastern portion, the East Village portion of the development. That'll be the first part that's currently, you know, if you drive by, that's what you see folks grading. They're clearing out, clearing out the trees, and then the developers also putting in a lot of the site infrastructure, including a great stormwater management feature, Pond, that we're going to turn into a feature of the campus, and I'll show that here in some renderings. Kind of key things for us as we think about this property is really four guiding principles: forge connections, showcase innovation, launch, develop, grow, and do this in a way that we maintain sustainable stewardship. And so here is the first picture that I'd like to show you of our first building. So we have, NC 55 is over on the right side of the screen. We come into the campus on Forest Light Way, which is running across the north side or the upper side of the page there. On the left side of the page, going north to south, is Technology Drive, and so we're situated here right in this first entrance coming in off of NC 55. There's a tunnel shown there on the north end that will take, allow folks to go under the road, pedestrians, bikes, scooters, skateboards, to get over to the northern part of that first portion of East Village where a lot of the amenities in this mixed-use development are. What we're showing in our first phase, this first building, is a building and a lot of surface parking. A portion of that surface parking will become future buildings, and I'll show that in the next slides. We do have a nice neighbor here to the right, which is a cell tower, so we've got, we will have good cell service there. But we, what we're doing with the site there is that building and that stormwater containment measure, as it's called, which is the pond, is really going to become a key feature as we face the front of the campus towards Forest Light Way, with a courtyard on the backside there of Building A that will begin to develop as we move into the next phase. So later on down the road, when we get funding for the next building, will be, it'll be a second building there, kind of completing that courtyard feature and a new surface, I mean, and a new parking structure. That, as that is occurring, that's coming down the hill, so the high point of the site there is right up close to Forest Light Way where Building A is, and then the site begins to develop downward after that. And then the third building, master planned, is a building C there with another parking deck, using up some of that original surface parking that we will have at the beginning of the first phase. And so that's our, that's our general site layout. And so that's our, that's our general site layout. Again, these are the main core programmatic features that Dr. Rawls mentioned earlier. Classrooms, labs, admin for our university transfer program, for our general education programs, as well as all the functions that we need for student services to really be a campus and have that campus designation with the community college system. So there's student services and student resources. And then some of the other programs, but the biggest of which would be our biotech and manufacturing programs that really are there to support the industry that is in this part of the county and really throughout the county and the region. And so here we go. So here is a nice rendering of the site, kind of looking from the Forest Light Way area, looking down overhead at the first building in the foreground, and then the two buildings and the associated parking decks behind those. As the site is grading downward, the decks kind of start at what looks like service parking, but the decks go down in the back there of the site. And so that's NC 55 looking off at the top of the page there. This is a zoomed-in version of that first, of that first building. And then I've got another view here. So this is kind of looking down from a lower level, looking across that pond that we're trying to make a nice feature, and then zooming into a great gathering space outdoors that will really, we hope, will serve the needs of the college and the community as a whole, to really have gathering space inside that can then bleed into the outside for events and gatherings, overlooking that, overlooking that feature, that water feature there. And then we have another view here of the first building, and this is what it'll look like at Phase 1 with just the first building. A side view there, looking from Technology Drive with the parking, and then adding in the second building there and the third building to complete that courtyard view. And so that is our general layout of the site and some great renderings there. And as Dr. Rawls mentioned, you know, our timeline really is looking about four years out, about two years to get through design, permitting, bidding, and then starting construction in the summer, late summer of 2027, and finishing construction in summer of 2029, and then doing all of our move-in and setup. I will say, we do intend to get into the site plan review process before the 24-month timeline. Our target for that is to hit site plan submission in next summer, because that's a longer process, as you know, than our, than the building permit process. So our intent is to get into the site plan review next summer. And so with that, glad to answer any questions or go back to a slide if you want to linger on a slide or a view. And so we thank you for the opportunity to share with you what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions for Mr. Scott? Here, no, thank you.
All right.
We're good?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. It's time for public forum. This is an opportunity for community members to address the Town Council. Some reminders, remember, three minutes is your time. The green starts, yellow, you have 30 seconds, and red will be the completion of your presentation. Unless you have four more people, you get nine minutes. So we'll go ahead and kick off the public forum. First speaker tonight, Mary Ms. Gimmins. And also a reminder, give your name and address again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mary Ms. Gimmins, 3177, Ritz-Hammer, Run, New Hill. Thanks very much, guys. Apex's rapid growth has strained roads, schools, and impacted our daily lives. Yet the development approval process has continued a status quo and is largely controlled by the Town Council and staff, not residents or developers. The current system allows the council, the staff, and developers to shape projects without early public input, often leaving citizens out of critical decisions until it's nearly too late to make changes. Instead of blaming developers, the Town Council should make the process transparent and equitable for everyone. In fact, for up to two years before a formal application is made, developers meet with Apex planners, the town's economic team, and council members to determine whether a project is feasible. Once satisfied, only then does a developer hold a neighborhood meeting for neighbors within just 500 feet of the proposed development, which excludes many interested parties. After the neighborhood meeting occurs, a formal application is made, and the documents are added to the town's interactive development map for all to see. By now, it's almost too late for the public to effectively impact a proposed development. Is it any wonder residents and developers alike are frustrated by this system? Instead of blaming developers and leaving residents' concerns unmet, why hasn't this Town Council made the process more equitable and transparent? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gimmins. Don Cuselino.
Don Cuselino, 3632 Bosco Road. Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, and fellow neighbors. Let me tell you a story, another sad tale of a farm gone forever. This 110-acre property on Tingen Road sold for $450,000 in 2010, then for just $81,000 in 2014. And now, only seven days later, or just ago, the broker listed it at the stunning price of nearly $35 million. We all know the land will be sold and developed, and my purpose is not to talk about the growth that we see. But what caught my attention, besides the eye-popping $35 million price, and should catch yours, is how confident this broker is that a zoning change will be approved. And I directly quote from the listing, Dorify MLS ID 10119250. "Apex likely to support a zoning amendment for the Office and Industrial Zoning to a higher-density residential zoning." So this is a profound statement to make, which changes the 2045 land use map as it stands today. And I'm curious why this is stated with such certainty in the ad. Do they expect the Town Council approval just like that, and even without any community engagement, just like another transaction? Meanwhile, in reality, traffic is rising, schools are at capacity, tree canopy is disappearing, and developers are having to discount newly constructed high-density housing by as much as 10%. And this seems out of step with what we've watched this year, as the Town Council has accelerated approvals for upzonings, and that's rural land going to higher density. Just a month ago, we were reminded of Ruben's substantial win against the town of Apex, showing that taking private property unlawfully can be challenged, a case that mirrors the Big Branch Pump Station and Force Main lawsuit. Again, a project that is to serve the private development of Veridia. The point tonight is simple. The community is here to be heard, to shine a light on the process, and to hold decision-makers accountable. Many of us are watching, documenting, and asking the hard questions, and sometimes it takes the law to ensure accountability. We will continue to raise concerns, demand transparency at every step, and remind the town that public trust is not optional. It's essential. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cuselino. Elizabeth Stitt.
Elizabeth Ray Stitt, 3113 Friendship Road, Mayor and Town Council. Good evening. I want to bring attention to Consent Agenda Item Number Eight that you just approved with no discussion tonight. This item is memorandum of understanding between the town of Apex, the town of Cary, and the town of Holly Springs for an engineering studies to evaluate the feasibility of supporting additional wastewater capacity needs for Apex and Holly Springs at the Western Wake Regional Water Reclamation Facility, which is more commonly known as the New Hill Wastewater Facility. This facility has already a huge impact on New Hill neighborhoods that have tirelessly dealt with sewer odor since at least 2022 from the daily treatment of 7.44 million gallons of sewage per day. This study that you just authorized tonight with no conversation is to look at the feasibility of increasing that facility to 30 million gallons of sewage per day, four times as much as the current flow. If you can't manage the odors today, how do you propose to manage the odors of four times the amount of sewage? The documents included in tonight's agenda packet also states, Cary, Apex, and Holly Springs have begun discussions to consider wastewater capacity options for Holly Spring. So we're taking on Holly Spring as well. In references, Apex Long Range Water Resources Plan completed in 2023 and a May 2024 North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Study. It is clear that an expansion has been in the works at least since 2023. When was Apex going to be transparent with the New Hill community that this was in the works? Plans like these quietly worked on and formed years before the impact community is ever notified is a violation of public trust. I ask that you right this wrong by scheduling a community meeting to show the respect that the New Hill community deserves, to provide transparency regarding the potential expansion, and to understand community concerns before you get too far along and another lawsuit comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stitt. Fran Hudson.
All right, so I'm Fran Hudson, 5524 Rex Road, New Hill. I just gave your clerk notices for each of you, including the town manager and the assistant town managers. So this notice, basically, I wanted to highlight the history of the law and what the town, that was obviously founded in 1873, the laws that y'all are under at the time of founding were Battles Revizal, which was actually the precursor for General Statute 160D. And that laid out, one of the big points of it was Number 18. I don't cover all that detail in here, because there's a lot of stuff that y'all need to really dig into, and it doesn't, you know, three minutes is not enough time for me to go through at all. But the Number 18 on Battles Revizal on Chapter 111, which is for the towns, was for nuisance laws. So it gave the town the authority to write laws that would abate nuisances for the people. And in 1923, the North Carolina Zoning Enabling Act, it actually came from the Department of Commerce, because they put out a, kind of a model act for standard state zoning enabling act. That actually gave the ability to use zoning to protect the rights of the people. It was for the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the people. And that was done by regulating commerce, because it came from the Department of Commerce. They can only regulate commerce. So that is really what you're tasked with, is to regulate, make regular, the commerce, so that it protects the rights of the people. And the people actually get to determine what our general welfare is. That's not something y'all can come up with and decide, okay, it's the general welfare of the people to put this development here. That's not right. That's why you have the responsibility of providing this public hearing, so that we can actually say, okay, we don't want this. That's our right to say, it violates our liberties, it impacts our property rights, and it's not something that the government has the authority to do. Most people don't know that, because I think we've been taught backwards. The school system does not cover the way that our constitution lays out the law, and then all of the statutes actually fall under that, so they have to honor the rights of the people. Let's see, sorry, losing my place, because I'm going all over the place. One court case that's really interesting that I think you all should go and read was from 1926. It was three years after this zoning statute act was put in place, and it concerned one property owner who wanted to sell his property to a, sorry, to a developer kind of thing, and to get the most money, but the people stood up against it, and they said no. So the Supreme Court of the United States actually said, no, you cannot violate the rights of the people. So just look into that, but make sure you read that notice, and if you'll put it in the public record, so other people can find it and read it, that would be amazing.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Thank you.
Jonathan Pierce. Jonathan Pierce.
I wasn't sure if I was supposed to speak in this section or in the next one. This one, perfect. In this one, perfect. Thank you. Sorry, I'm used to running restaurants, not public speaking, so bear with me. Thank you. Mayor Gilbert and Town Council members, my name is Jonathan Pierce, and my business partners and I are proud restaurateurs and property owners here in Apex. In 2018, we opened the doors to our first venue in downtown Apex, Scratch Kitchen and Tap Room. Since then, we have made investments in projects like Tap Station, turning the entrance to our town into a vibrant, inviting community hub. In 2023, we took over a small office space and turned it into Neat and Sweet, a cocktail, dessert, and charcuterie concept that has welcomed more than 50,000 people since opening. Today, we are proud to say we employ 177 people across our Apex locations. My business partners and I would like to thank you in advance for your time in considering our application for a facade grant to improve both the Tobacco Mule Exchange Building and Scratch Kitchen and Tap Room. As you may know, we recently purchased the Tobacco Mule Exchange Building in downtown Apex from out-of-state investors back in March. Since then, we have been working on plans to improve the exterior of the building from the Templeton Street view and the new parking lot perspective. This project will add value to the Apex community and its stakeholders by creating a unique downtown gathering place, increasing seating capacity at scratch, and beautifying the building from what has become the main entrance with the new town parking lot. The completion of this project will allow us to serve an additional 1,500 people or more per week. The economic impact of this is not just positive for our own businesses. Bringing another 1,500 people into downtown means more foot traffic on our streets, more people shopping in our stores, more entrepreneurs making Apex their home, and the addition of a dozen or so new jobs in our community. The proposed project includes several elements. First, it includes a permanent fire pit gathering area along the exterior of Neat and Sweet. This will create an inviting environment as folks approach the building from the parking lot, while also adding seating on colder days. Secondly, we need to address the grass area under the mature crepe myrtle trees on the left side as you enter the property. Despite our best efforts, this area has not been able to grow grass in some time, making it a muddy or dusty mess most of the time. People do like to use this space, but it's currently not very inviting. We would like to create a long-term solution for this problem by investing in a premium turf solution and keeping the crepe myrtle trees. This would allow us to add games like Cornhole or Use It for rocking chairs open to the general public. Lastly, the main project includes a permanent pergola structure that is unlike anything in Apex at this time. The pergola have a retractable roof system, making it perfect for those surprise rain showers we get often. It will also have windows on all sides that open to allow a breeze when the weather is nice, or be closed to protect guests from the weather when needed. With floor-to-ceiling glass panels, this space will be open, airy, and inviting. The pergola structure will add a measurable value to the Tobacco Mule Exchange Building, our businesses, and the town of Apex alike. We're expressing your support in approving the facade grant application to financially partner with us to bring this project to fruition. With that, I think the Town Council's support, for your support of our staff, our businesses, and our future investments in this town.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. All right, Michelle O'Connor. Nine minutes, please, Mr. Clerk.
Dr. Michelle Hoffner-O'Connor, 2664 Jordan Point Boulevard, New Hill. Good evening. Before I begin, I would like to reference our petition submitted to the town clerk, which as of today totals over 2,100 signatures. Earlier today, the Georgia Department of Community Affairs held an open forum to allow the public to give input on regulations concerning data centers. This follows actions taken by the state earlier this year, which includes a moratorium on builds with planned high-energy use and the creation of the, quote, "technological facility classification" under the Development of Regional Impact rules. These are meaningful steps in the right direction to ensure protection from the inevitable harms data centers pose to communities. But unfortunately, the harms data centers pose to communities, but unfortunately, the creation of these regulations is at least seven years overdue in some parts of the state of Georgia. When Beverly and Jeff Morris bought their home in Newton County in 2016, they planned for it to be forever. A data center for Meta became their new neighbor in 2018. The megawatt usage for this data center is not known to the public, however, the New York Times reports that it uses over 500,000 gallons of water for cooling per day. Meanwhile, the Morris's taps have run dry. They have replaced all their appliances as many as three times since 2019. Their drinking water is unsafe, and they cannot afford the $25,000 needed to replace their damaged well. The other 120,000 people of Newton County are experiencing similar issues, and if the county cannot find a way to increase capacity soon, they will be forced to start rationing water within the next five years. How did all of this happen? Because the local and state governments did not ask the developer the extent of resources required to support the data center, and the developer was not required to disclose this information. And while I don't want to dump on Georgia's efforts to make things right for their constituents, this is clearly too little, too late for people like the Morris's. Their home, wallet, and livelihood are irreparably altered. Like Georgia, North Carolina does not have any existing unified regulations for data centers with respect to utility usage, pollution, et cetera. The number and size of active data centers we can identify is lower compared with other areas of the country, with less than 100 overall, and the largest operating at a capacity of 104 megawatts in Cherokee County. Unfortunately, North Carolina has been declared the new Virginia, with developers coming forward with new project proposals by the day. Here in New Hill, the proposed data campus is now planned to operate at a capacity of 300 megawatts, not the 240 we originally learned about a few weeks ago. For reference, this usage is two and a half times more than what the entire town of Apex uses at 120 megawatts. Based on the information that is publicly available, this data center, if built based on the specifications known today, will become one of the largest in the state, second to the proposed 400-megawatt data center in near Charlotte if that is permitted to build. Meanwhile, it is unclear if Duke Energy can keep up with demand and support all these new data centers adding strain to the grid. As you may already be aware, the Utilities Commission will meet next month to assess just how capacity, how much capacity exists to support data centers along with the rest of the state. And despite that the power concern, power is a known concern, these developers are undeterred because they know local and state government are behind in understanding the impact data centers have on communities and have not developed regulations to keep them in check. They wouldn't be good at their jobs if they didn't know how to make these bills sellable. To echo my neighbor Doug Stewart, who spoke here two weeks ago, we are not against data centers as a concept. Computing power is needed, and AI is rapidly increasing demands. However, the well-being of those living in our New Hill communities, the constituents of the town of Apex, as well as those residing in Wake County and the state of North Carolina, must come first. Protections are needed if we are to maintain and perhaps even augment the peak of good living that Apex proudly declares. We need to take the lessons learned in Georgia, California, Virginia, and Texas to heart and get ahead of this before any developer breaks ground here in Apex. Here are some key questions and thoughts to consider. Do data centers, especially of this size, fit the definition of tech flex or light industrial? Based on the definitions provided by the town of Apex, only light industrial accounts for undesirable effects on residential or commercial lands. However, the use of the word might in this definition should be subject to scrutiny. We already know without additional conditions that undesirable effects will occur in our communities. Does this data center appropriately fit the goals of the 2045 plan? While there is no denying that this land is not marked for new for new housing, one must ask if it is appropriate to put such a large data center within two miles of 11 distinct housing communities. As the town refers to the 2045 plan as a living document and is now moving forward with development of a 2055 plan, Apex should exercise its right to allow for flexibility that favors the well-being of its constituents. Does this data center appropriately align with environmental policies and priorities for the town of Apex? What if Duke Energy can only guarantee a steady stream of power by turning the coal plants that were recently shut down back on? Is the air pollution that will inevitably be caused by diesel generators going to exceed what is safe for our families? If Cary cannot supply enough wastewater to keep up with cooling demands, where will the additional water come from? What happens when the eventual buyer, who utilizes a facility, is done with these servers, and these buildings stand abandoned and useless with parts degrading and settling into the environment over time? Answering these and countless other questions are key to determining if we can allow a data center here at all, and if so, under what conditions. Our group is committed to researching the impact of data centers on communities and sharing all this information we can with the town council, the planning board, other town boards, and more importantly, the citizens of Apex and beyond. We are committed long term. We know data centers are coming. If this project isn't approved, there will certainly be another asked from another developer, and we believe development of standard regulations and conditions are needed to preserve everyone's peak of good living. We want to work with you, not against you. We are all on the same side and care deeply for this community. At this time, the town of Apex needs to be willing to set the terms by asking the developer tough questions, pushing back when the answers are vague, and requesting transparency and consistency for all information the developer must provide. We ask that the town prioritize publication of meeting dates, times, locations, and agendas associated with this application ahead of required timelines to ensure the public has ample opportunity to take part in these conversations. Finally, please invite members of our group to contribute to development of conditions associated with rezoning, development and/or update of relevant ordinances that will regulate data centers, and to long-term planning efforts for Apex, such as development of the 2055 plan. I'm not originally from North Carolina, if you couldn't tell by the speed at which I talk. After spending six years in Carrow and Durham, my husband and I chose to move to Apex four years ago. Like the Morris's, we view our home as our forever home, a place to raise our family. Like so many other people here, I care that New Hill, Apex, and Wake County continue to be feasible to remain my home. The need of big data and AI industries cannot supersede the needs of our community. We ask that you leave no stone unturned as you and other members of the town of Apex review this application from Natale Investors and ask what, if anything, aligns with the peak of good living. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hesham Osman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Heesham Osman, 3181 Mantle Ridge Drive. Council members, town staff, good evening. I'm here again to talk about the utility billing update. I welcome the update from Manager Vosberg. I also watched the video they released on Friday. After I spoke last time, a lot of neighbors, friends, residents reached out to me and indicated they have similar problems. And so I think it's a very large silent majority here in Apex that is fed up with the utility billing issue. And the positive comments today from from Manager Vosberg really indicates that we still haven't tackled this problem. There's a little bit of gaslighting happening. On the last bills in the video, he mentioned that it's only the service dates that are wrong. That is the core data on a bill. If your time of service isn't even correct on the bill, how can we as residents trust that anything else on the bill is accurate? Last time we spoke, we you indicated that we would not have late fees, that that was a decision by council, no late fees and no disruptions. My text message reminder today said your bill is due in two days. To avoid late fees and potential service disruptions pay on time. So that's again, in my text message and my email, that seems to be a different message than what a council decided in their work session three weeks ago. So again, continued distrust and lack of confidence by the public in what's occurring with the utility situation is very concerning. And I understand everybody's working hard, everybody's trying their best, but it seems that we want to just move on and pretend this problem doesn't exist. And it may very well be that all the bills dollar-wise are correct, but as a resident and as a as a consumer of this utility, I have no choice but to accept the bill as it is. I can't switch vendors. If this was any other, if this was my cell phone provider, I would have switched providers. If this was any other utility that I had an option to switch, I would. And I think right now, it may just be a lack of confidence, it may just be lack of communication, but there's a there needs to be a reckoning with the community of how to get past this problem. It's been over a year, and simply saying everything is fine, just move on is not is no longer acceptable. So I really request the council, town staff, and other stakeholders to come up with a workable solution for the community, communicate it clearly, and execute on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Yeser.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, town officials. In case any of you, including me, are starting to have flashbacks of PTSD, I apologize for that, but I'm not here tonight to talk about the courtyards on Holt, nor 1305 Holt Road, Forest Connections, or anything like that. I am, however, here to follow up on the previous speaker and talk about changes to this to our solar credits. We've received, those of us who have solar panels, received this following communication from the town in which it states that at going forward, it's not a date, I'm just a phrase, going forward, you will no longer, solar panel consumers or customers will no longer be allowed to use solar credits to offset any of their non-electrical usage. Well, in 2022, after interviewing a half a dozen companies, all of whom told me about the very generous Town of Apex solar incentive, which was that you could offset any of the town utilities or services, and then combine that with a 30% credit that was provided by tax credit by the federal government, we went ahead and installed solar panels. Well, we all know what's happened in Washington. Thanks to the Trump administration, we no longer, after the end of this year, will have a 30% tax credit on installation of new solar panels. Now, what we've learned also this month is that effective at some point going forward, we will no longer have the ability to offset any non-electrical services provided by the town. I think that flies in the face of, I think, the green commitment that I know many of you, if not all of you on this panel, share. We all want to encourage the implementation of solar power, and yet we're doing something that is completely counterproductive to that. And we don't make decisions in the town of Apex in a vacuum. You have to consider what's happened at Washington regarding solar power. So what I'm asking is, I'm asking for the town council to reconsider this decision. I believe that we should continue to incentivize, especially in the fate of the light of the decision made in Washington, I believe it's our responsibility to incentivize residents of Apex to adopt solar power. I will also say that in terms of the portal, my bill is either clairvoyant because it says that it's 9/2 to 9/28, and I'm not sure how it can construct that, or it's 16 days long. It says both in the portal as of this afternoon. So the problem, as this gentleman said, is not fixed. And so it's two issues. The portal needs adjustment, but I think we really need to, if we are committed to sustainability and green, we need to review this this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. All right. Thank you all for coming out to speak tonight. That closes out our public forum, and we'll move on now. Does anybody need a break? Want to roll through it? Ready to roll? All right. Move on now to new business one, Apex Community Land Trust Establishment. Ms. Marla Newman.
Good evening, Mayor Gilbert, council members, Marla Newman, Director, Community Development and Neighborhood Connections. I'm coming to talk with you tonight about a proposal to create a community land trust. I'll also say at the beginning that I will be joined for this presentation with Attorney Steve Carr, with Ellen Gerin Carr, who is assisting us, along with Chris Welch from our town attorney's office. So what is a community land trust? If you'll recall, we brought some material to you during the work session back in March. We didn't get a chance to go through all of the details, so we're bringing this back to you today. So some of this will look familiar to you. A community land trust, of course, is a structure that allows land to be held in trust for community needs. What's important is it's outside of the influence of market pressures. So and for short, we'll call it the CLT. The CLT model connects income-qualified home buyers with perpetually affordable quality homes using what we call the National Community Land Trust Model. You'll see a diagram here that kind of walks through what that model looks like. The CLT acquires the land. A lot of times, the land is in one geographic area, but it does not have to be confined to one geographic area. But you assemble the land, the land trust can either build new, or it can also invest in doing preservation or rehab work. The land trust sets a sales price to make sure that the home that's constructed or preserved is permanently affordable, and then you find a qualified buyer. And increasingly, too, and we can talk about this, this model is being used also now in rental developments, but you find someone who's income-qualified to actually occupy the home. What is interesting is the CLT sells the structure but not the land. And of course, as we know here, land is one of the more expensive aspects of the development costs that we're facing and which undercuts our ability to offer more affordable homes. So if the CLT maintains the land but leases it at a favorable price, then that helps promote affordability and that buyer or renter is only paying for the structure. Of course, if the owner wants to sell, they are able to do that. However, they have to work with the land trust in setting that sales price so that A, it continues to be affordable for future buyers, the owner, if we're going to talk about it in the ownership sense, is able to get back their initial down payment and their investment as well as some appreciation. So they don't lose any equity. They may not receive the same amount of equity they would if they were selling a home that was at full market price, but they do receive some equity. And then that home is then resold to an income-qualified buyer. Talking a bit about the benefits, of course, we talk about the purchase price being set significantly below the market, and in a moment, you'll see a diagram of what a price would look like if you backed the cost of the land out of the transaction. They purchase the home or the structure, lease the land at a nominal rate, and that, again, protects the investment of the trust. And in our instance, that would be the investment of the town. Property taxes are assessed only on the value of the structure. So again, that helps with the cost because you're not paying real estate taxes on land. The resale price, as we mentioned a moment ago, is restricted, and then it does still provide that opportunity for an individual or a family to build equity and build wealth. So here's an example, again, where it talks about using basically a long-term land lease. And in most traditional CLT models, it's a 99-year lease that's renewable, perpetually renewable. So if you look at the example, if the sale price of the home is $459,000, with the CLT, of course, you see that we back out that $100,000 for the cost of the land, and that results in a purchase price of $359,000. Now, as an example, in the Raleigh metropolitan area, the HUD maximum home sales price is $382,000. So someone who makes 80% of the area median income would be eligible for a home and be able to afford it if it was in a land trust. If it was outside of the trust in terms of the regular ownership, that individual would not be able to afford the cost of the home. So some examples of land trust in North Carolina, you'll see a number of them from Asheville to Community Home Trust in Chapel Hill to Raleigh Area Land Trust, with whom I'm sure some of you are familiar with, the Durham Community Land Trust, Cape Fear, and Watauga Community Trust. I did a little research to I did a little research to give you an idea of how popular these land trusts have become. And so there was a study done by a nonprofit, national nonprofit called Grounded Solutions. And one of the things they specialize in is looking at how to create long-term affordability with housing. And what they discovered was that there are currently plus or minus about 314 shared equity organizations, and this kind of model talks about how you share the equity, shared equity organizations in 46 states, the District of Columbia in Puerto Rico. And that represents, this study was done in 2022, that represents a 30% increase since 2011, when the last survey was done. They also noted that 87% of households who are purchasing homes through the land trust are first-time home buyers. And there have been well over 40,000 units that have become part of community land trusts across the country, and that's both single-family ownership as well as multifamily or rental units. So I mentioned a couple of local land trusts. So Community Home Trust and Durham Community Land Trust are two of the oldest in North Carolina and some of the largest. And as you can see here, they both have over 300 units each. One of the interesting things about Durham Community Land Trust is when they started originally, they only focused on homeownership, but actually decided to expand. And now they do both homeownership and rental. And then one of the things that we'll talk about in a little bit too is how the boards are constructed. Usually with the model, you have 1/3 public participation, 1/3 stakeholder participation, and then 1/3 residents. That's not a dyed-in-the-wool formula, but that's kind of the traditional model. Of course, in starting a CLT, before you get homes built so that you could have residence, then, of course, that balance is going to look differently until you actually get homeowners or renters into units. And so we also did a little look into some CLTs that had government involvement. And so these are four that we found across the nation. Carver County Community Development Agency is in Minnesota. Of course, the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, and Harris County Housing Finance Corporation, and then the Chicago Housing Trust. Some of them have staff internal to their organization that manage the land trust. Some contract with third parties. Of course, our position would be, rather than trying to build that capacity in-house, we would offer that it would make more sense for us to do a request for proposal and look for a third party that has experience and a track record to actually partner with us in terms of managing the land trust. I want to also bring to your attention, we have a couple of developments here in town that the Raleigh Area Land Trust is working with. One is called Presswick, and the other is called Huxley. And we've actually done a presentation with staff on the land trust properties in those particular developments. And one of the things that's interesting, I'll give you an example of Presswick. The final purchase price for Presswick is $346,000, and these are townhomes. And you can earn from 80% to 100% of AMI and qualify to be in these homes. Now, if you earn 80% of AMI, you could also be eligible for down payment assistance from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, as well as potentially down payment assistance from Wake County. Those units at Presswick, as an example, are 2,000 square feet. The land lease that the homeowners pay per month is $50. And then they have HOA dues of $40 a month as well. And then also, just for comfort's sake, there are a number of lenders in this area who also will finance those homes that come through a community land trust. We have Pinnacle Financial Partners, North State Bank, Intercoastal Mortgage, Fifth Third Bank, and Coastal Credit Union are some of our local lenders who will finance these types of homes. At this point, I'm going to hand it off to Steve Carr, who will come and talk to us a little bit about some of the technical aspects of what we need to do to create a land trust. And then I will close out after Steve's presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, honorable staff. My name is Steve Carr. I'm with the Law Firm of Ellinger Carr in Raleigh. We're from that little community less known to the north of us here. And I'm proud to be counsel for the town. We, my partner Susan Ellinger is here with me. She's back here. We founded the Law Firm of Ellinger Carr about 17 years ago. We'll be celebrating our 17th anniversary on October 1st. Susan Ellinger has been a longtime counsel to the city of Raleigh. And we are proud to say now that we have sort of cornered the market on the triangle, particularly with now the representation of the Town of Apex. We've been representing the city of Raleigh, the city of Durham, Town of Chapel Hill. We also have the pleasure and the honor of serving Greensboro and Charlotte. So we've been doing this kind of work in affordable housing and community development for municipal governments and for both nonprofit and for-profit developers of affordable housing and community development. So we're happy to be a part of the effort that Town of Apex is involved in. And so the two questions that Marla asked me to address for y'all is, is how do you do this? Obviously, she touched on the effort and the discussions that we've been having with Chris and with the others, members of Marla's staff and everything too. And I was really honored to, pleased to find out that y'all had really been giving this a lot of thought as far back as 2021. This Town of Apex Affordable Housing Plan was also updated earlier this year. And so you've identified the need. You know what you need to do. You've got a piece of property that Marla has been proposing to talk about developing for affordable housing using the CLT model. And so the town's choices are sort of laid out in terms of how you get there, based on what the law says already under the North Carolina statutes that have been developed. And in your plan in 2021, you identified the community land trust as one of several options. Now, you could do this a couple of ways. One, the town could do it yourself. You could basically buy the land. You've already got some land set aside for this purpose, and then develop it yourself. And, but the proposal here is to do it with an intermediary. And the land trust model is also a way to ensure that you're going to have long-term affordability, as Marla explained earlier. And so those options include, you can construct it yourself and sell it or rent it. And I think the proposal that the staff is bringing to you tonight is one that includes a mix of both. We just concluded a transaction with the Raleigh Area Land Trust in Raleigh, with the city of Raleigh, a little bit ago, that included both a mix of land, single-family homeowners and that sort of thing, as well as a rental mix as well in the model. What does affordable mean? Marla touched on it a little bit. The statute's basically to say you should be somewhere in the low, which is roughly 60% of area median income or 80% of area median income, which is basically what the moderate income level is. And so that's the proposal. Including, I think, the proposal that you're bringing also includes that we might have some market-rate homes as well. And so long, and you can do that so long as 20% of the homes that you're proposing to build that will be built with this community land trust model are set aside for 60% of AMI, and then you can serve sort of this other mix. So it's usually somewhere in the mix of 60% to 80% AMI area median income for what that is. And so you've got that opportunity to do it yourself or to use it with an intermediary. And we've determined that the CLT model may be a good one. It's an appropriate option to do it. So how do you then determine? How do you achieve those goals? Yes, sir.
I'm trying to understand why. Like, what's the pros and cons of some of those options right there versus the CLT model? Like, I'm guessing flexibility. You seem to be adding overhead, but maybe you're getting flexibility. Is that kind of the trade?
That's the main objective here. Basically, as Marla pointed out, the flexibility you have is the land itself. The community land trust would be basically established in the form of a nonprofit. So we would, and we'll talk about that in just a few minutes. The nonprofit then will own that property. It will be exempt from the property tax. And so can, you know, can pass along the savings associated with that. So the only thing that's going to be taxed would be the home or the structure that is owned by the individuals.
But wouldn't that be the case if we, like, sold the land to DHIC or some company for a dollar? I mean, wouldn't that also be tax exempt? Because they're a nonprofit or not?
They could claim a nonprofit exemption as well, yes.
Okay, so presumably it's not, it'd be the same either way on that front, right?
That's correct.
Or maybe it's more complicated?
Partially, but one of the things to be concerned about is making sure for the long term. Once we relinquish the land, we have no more control over what happens in the future, right?
Right.
So we could sell it to a land trust that might go defunct. And then there goes our land. And so part of the thinking here is, if we created the trust, and therefore you have the power to appoint the board, determine who you want to contract with essentially, to manage, making sure the property is sold or developed or rented in whatever manner you see fit, that keeps the authority and the ownership, if you will, controlled by the town.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And another protection, Marla, on that as well. In fact, that was also a feature of what we did with Raleigh Area Land Trust in this recent transaction in Raleigh this summer, was the possibility of reverter. If, you know, if something goes wrong, then, and there's a default, and they don't achieve the objectives that you lay out in terms of how this should be affordable and over the long term, there's the possibility then that the town could take that property back over.
Okay.
And so, in fact, that's part of what I want to get to in the next, in the next discussion, was that you all get to decide. This is the legislative choice. This is the policy choice that the town has to make sure that these properties remain affordable and you're serving this, you know, this unmet need right now in the town and all over the country, really. But this is the way you do it. And the statute basically lays out those options. You can set aside, you know, how many affordable units you want. In some projects, it's 100%, you know, that are either reserved for 60 or 80% AMI. You get to determine the rules about who qualifies for the purchase of these homes or to be affordable renters and this sort of thing, setting those affordability levels and price limits that Marla referred to. You get to set the rules with the CLT and whoever they work with to hire to manage the process and that sort of thing too, with this RFP that we talked about, in terms of when is this going to happen? And how soon should these be put into operation? And that sort of thing too. And then you set the rules for, as Raleigh has done with their community development program for a long time, eligibility for purchase and transfer controls. You know, who's going to be the first-time home buyer? And how, and what happens with a later sale? What, you know, what does that home buyer do in terms of what's their opportunity for selling this to maintain the affordability of these things over the long term? So the CLT becomes the way, the vehicle that basically says, we're going to manage this process. We're going to build these homes with some, you know, some other, you know, third-party developers and builders who will help us do that and achieve affordability over the long term.
If a future town council doesn't prioritize affordable housing and they want to, like, take it back or something, can they do that with these land trusts in the future? Like, if there's a different policy point of view of the future town council, let's say, can they undo the land trust and take the land back and sell it or whatever they want to do with it?
We'd have to build that into the agreement for the sale of the property. And the statutes basically provide for covenants and conditions that establish what, you know, what the basis for a transfer, a conveyance of the property for this, you know, for this long-term leasing opportunity from...
They'd be raking the contract presumably if they did that.
Yes. So all of that's going to be governed by the contract in terms of how you do this. You could lease the property. You could sell the property. I think our proposal is to say, it's probably the simpler and better option to say, let's create this land trust, that you're all, you're going to appoint the board and to establish, you know, the rules for how this thing's going to be governed and operated. And so that's another element of your control as well.
Okay. I've worked in a place where the rules have been overturned with politics. So I'm just kind of like, I'd like to protect this as much as possible if we do go this route.
Absolutely. And I think, well, and that's a very good point. But I think that's part, that's built into the statutory process as well, is you can set those rules. You can basically make those judgments and this sort of thing too. Because it is a nonprofit corporation that's going to be basically set up at your behest. And then you're going to say, you know, then, you know, obviously, at some point, you're turning over the control to that board of directors. But you're basically having an opportunity to choose who's going to be on that board and what the rules of the road are going to be.
Okay.
So, in fact, let's talk about that for just a minute. The basic framework for this, and that's one reason that the town has reached out to us, is we do this a lot for a lot of our nonprofit clients all day, every day, is, you know, to form a North Carolina nonprofit corporation. And then we'll get an EIN number for that entity. And then we'll go about setting it up and approving, you know, your homework if you all decide you want to do this, is to say, who should our board of directors be initially? We talked about, the classic model basically says that we have 1/3 that are going to be, you know, representative from the resident community. We won't obviously have that at the outset. But until we get these things built, we'll have basically some representatives from the Town of Apex, members of the public and that sort of thing. People who are experienced in nonprofit and community development work probably are your likely candidates for this kind of activity. But, you know, that's a part of the process that we would be engaged to help you with. And then what we'll create, you know, just like for any other nonprofit, we'll have articles, bylaws, and, you know, a set of policies that's established, that you all can establish to say, here's how we want you to do this, to roll out this program for affordable housing. So, and then, as Marla mentioned, a part of that process will also involve an RFP process to say, who's out there who can help us? Who has this expertise available to help us put this together and manage this process to make it go forward? Those include some declarations of affordability covenants and other controls that you can build in to say, hey, if something goes wrong, can we get this back? Can we take control back? And I think that's the way we would handle that. We talked about this model in terms of who's going to sit on the board. I think our initial recommendation would be, it's going to be basically, you know, folks that you all recommend should be populating this board. And then once we've got community set up, then we can figure out what, who the successor board members would be. And I'll turn it back to Marla. Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
So what we're proposing is a few key milestones to kind of walk us through what would be the rest of this particular fiscal year. So the proposal would be that we would get the approval to form the CLT and obtain the tax ID number. And we would immediately go to work on that with the goal of trying to have that initial formation in place, file the papers with the Secretary of State by November. Then, of course, the next step would be to appoint and seat the board of directors. Along with that is then when you have to also look at starting to develop your governance documents. We would propose that we would look to have that initial board of directors seated by February. So recognizing that we've got, you know, the fall holidays and other things coming up, wanted to give sufficient time to consider the options, determine even some of the qualifications that you might want to have in place for those people that you would want to have serve on that board. So that gives us time to work with you on what some of those qualifications and criteria might be. And then as we seat the board, then the next step would be to start to develop those governance documents. So we already would have the articles and bylaws because we'd have to create those to file with the Secretary of State at the beginning to create the nonprofit. But then you have a whole lot of other documents, operational documents, covenants, some of the things that Steve just referenced. And some of these can start to work on parallel tracks. And some of these can start to work on parallel tracks, but these things would have to be in place in order for us to file the application to get the tax exempt status. So as much as possible, we would want to immediately after seating the board of directors, start to work down those parallel tracks to create all of the various operational and governance documents that would be necessary. And then once those things are in place, then we would look to issue the RFP to find a third party that could assist us in actually doing the operational day-to-day work. As I mentioned with some of the other organizations, and most of them are far larger than ours, some of them took that responsibility in-house. I, I would not propose that for, for a community of our size, just to add staff for that purpose. I think that to start, it makes more sense to work with someone who has the expertise and the experience. And then maybe as a town, as we grow and mature and maybe our inventory grows, then we could always come back and revisit that in the future, whether you'd want to continue to contract with a third party or bring that in-house, especially you would figure after some time, we would become more familiar with how to do the operations and so forth. But initially, the proposal would be that we would work with a third party. And so I'm available for questions, as is Steve.
One thing that occurs to me is like, I mean, this seems like a, a brilliant system. I love it. Don't you need a certain amount of inventory to amortize the cost of everything on this page? Do you know what I mean? Like there's costs associated with getting an RFP, getting a third-party management, getting all this governance, there's overhead here.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be six figures. So until you get to a certain point of inventory, you know, one could argue, why don't we just take that six figures and buy another house or, you know, lower the cost of more housing? So how do you, like, where do you see the critical mass where this becomes, I don't want to say profitable, but efficient to the sense that we're doing in that good versus just taking whatever funds and just directly increasing affordable stock?
So I think part of what we would look at is how we negotiate any kind of contract with the third party. So if we took, for example, the 13 acres that we have and if we wanted to use that 13 acres as the first part of our inventory, we're looking at, at a minimum 170 units out there, based on, if you recall, the presentation that DFI made to us last year when they took a look at that time at seven acres, right? That was before we realized we had the opportunity to get the entire parcel. So the money comes in both the development cost, and I, I failed to add, and thank you also for asking the question, this would be a mixed income development, okay? And so now, as long as we meet the statutory requirements of setting aside a minimum of 20% for folks who are 60% and below of area median income, then we can have a mix of incomes. And of course, those higher income homes or the market rate homes could help underwrite the cost of operations. So we would start to balance out the numbers that way.
Does that happen in practice?
That's increasingly the way it's happening because it just makes more financial sense to have mixed income rather than 100% affordable. And I will also say that part of this is a long game, right? Because you have to, you have to build the housing stock. And for us, we're looking at a mixture of both single-family as well as multifamily, ownership as well as rental, right? And so we're looking at the different ways that even in terms of the types of homes that are created, that they provide a revenue stream that could help underwrite or support the cost of operating the, the land trust.
Do the CLTs fundraise normally from private?
I'm, I'm sure that, yeah, I'm sure they do. And by working with an existing organization, you know, we would be one part of their support, but they as nonprofits themselves have to raise funds for their own operations in addition to looking at the revenues that they generate. So that's a standard operational structure.
Okay, thanks. Are you recommending a strategy of us moving, if we, if we adopt this, us moving existing property into the CLT or is the strategy for us create the board and let the CLT identify what property, what land is available and then having them make the purchase?
My recommendation is that any land that we're currently looking at to develop for housing be a part of the trust. So that at the outset, we, we are making that statement that we are looking for long-term affordability in a mixed income community. And so anything that we either currently own or may acquire in the future, the proposal would be that you all consider adding it to the trust.
So to that, to that point, I think early on in your comments, you mentioned that the land doesn't need to be continuous. So we have discussed as part of the Affordable Housing Plan, developers instead of building houses and then offering them that, you know, affordable housing pricing, actually donate lots to us for future development either by, you know, I've been drawing a blank right now.
Land and lots and loo.
Who, who builds houses? Come on.
Developers.
The developer?
The developers and builders.
It will come to me in a minute. This is embarrassing, all right. So, but, so would we be able to do land and loo type, type donations and add them to the trust over time?
Absolutely.
What about other parties that might have an interest in doing a long-term land lease but are not ready to let go of the land? Could we partner with them? So also kind of in context of the Affordable Housing Plan, we've talked about, you know, houses of worship that are land-rich but cash poor, right? Is, is, you know, would partnering with, with some of those organizations be a way of increasing inventory of, of land in addition to what we put in as, as a town? Is, is there like a partnership like that feasible or is that completely separate?
I'd have to kind of think about that. To talk with Steve, I'm not sure if I've seen a model quite like that. I need to process that. I don't know if Steve has seen a model like that.
I think that is possible. I mean, if you've got a nonprofit corporation that is going to have a certain set of bylaws or rules that can govern how they, how they operate, they're free contracts. And then back to your, your question too, I think they could do better. They're going to be a public charity, they're going to be a 501(c)(3). So I think that they have the opportunity to do that. You have some flexibility to do that with multiple sites and multiple options in terms of how that's, yeah. The town itself has the opportunity to do long-term leases as well, so, yeah.
Okay. And one more, one more question. You mentioned a couple of times kind of restricting the sales price or the resale price of, of the housing. What would kind of be the, the mechanics behind that, right? So let's, let's say market appreciation was, was 10%, right? How would a sale price be restricted for somebody who took, you know, took benefit of, of the program, right? Wants to resell, move on? What, what's kind of the mechanics of, of setting the appropriate price level for, for resale?
And that's part of what is included in those governance documents, how the future sales prices will be set. So let's just say generally in the market, properties have appreciated 15% and the documents that may be created to govern how future sales prices are calculated may say that that 15% increase in value would be split at whatever percentage, be it 50/50 with the current owner and the, the balance remain with the trust. So those are things that we would have to actually determine as we develop the actual documents. What is it that we would want to look at? We would also look at what are the best practices, what are happening with other organizations? How do they go about usually setting the formula? So that's not a, a set price or mechanic that I can actually describe in the moment because I think we'd have to do the research to see what makes the most sense for the market.
Thank you. And habits, that's for humanity was the word I was looking for.
Can you explain more about the 99 years and as it, does it transfer to the family member? Can that happen or how's that work?
Yes, the family member could, depending on how the, the deed is set up. So if I wanted to convey that to my heirs upon my death, as long as they are income eligible, they, they could continue and they would have to qualify like any other subsequent buyer, but they could continue. And the, the 99 years is partly, again, the long-term affordability. Now, for instance, I think the Chicago Housing Trust with, and they're only homeownership in Chicago, that particular one, well, they have a 30-year lease period, but theirs is renewable, right? But I think part of the reason that most of the models go with 99 years is because that really cements that, again, long-term affordability. And I think that also makes a lot of the lenders more comfortable to know that this inventory will stay affordable and stay in the mix for the long haul.
Thank you for that.
Would the land trust have opportunities for grants to, to help purchase land or you, you think it would primarily be funded by town funds every year?
Well, I would imagine that as a 501(c)(3), it could apply for grants. Yeah, it would be eligible as a nonprofit, so it could. All the, the traditional ways of raising funds that any other community development corporation or the like, 501(c)(3) would do, they, it would have that ability as well.
Seems a little weird. I mean, like in the sense that this is a 501(c)(3) but it's controlled entirely by a government, right? I guess that's not that uncommon, but new for me, right?
And it, and it wouldn't necessarily be controlled 100% by government because like we mentioned, in terms of the model, we would have representatives, we, the town would appoint to represent the, the public interest. Then you have community stakeholders, which are oftentimes either funders, nonprofit or philanthropic funders or others who've invested, they would be part of that stakeholder group. And then the last group would be the actual residents who live there. And so collectively, they make decisions and the like, but one of the ways you maintain your influence is through the, the part of the board that you all would appoint.
Oh, so we only appoint part of the board.
Yeah, not to start off, you appoint the whole board, but over time, it can, it will transition. And you don't have to do the, the hardcore one-third, one-third, one-third. You know, that's another part of what we would discuss upon creation of the actual trust is what would that ultimately look like once you have residents in place? Because that is a critical piece, is that you have to have resident owners as a part of that board.
Got it. All right.
I'm super excited about this. I think this is an amazing idea and, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel here. We're, we're kind of following in others' footsteps to address a need. And, you know, one of the things we always talk about is like, okay, you're only going to do this affordable housing for 10 years. You're only going to do the affordable housing for a restricted period of time and this is, you know, in lieu of perpetuity, right? We're saying 99 years for this, for leasing this land. So I'd say this is as close as we can get to perpetuity here, so.
I think it will be a lot easier for us to ask for commitments from developers, right? If they don't actually have to build the, the whole structure and then such, like all at the same time, right? We might be able to get larger lots and put them into trust and, to your point, safeguard the longevity beyond, you know, the 10, 20, 30 years that, that we typically see as kind of the commitments that are being made.
100%.
Are there examples of other municipalities getting such commitments of donations to land trusts in Wake County, North Carolina? I'm just foreseeing an argument with our lawyer.
So like Raleigh Area Land Trust, the, the example that Steve gave a moment ago, that was land that they received from the city of Raleigh.
Part of, I mean, so the, the situation I'm concerned about is it's not from the city of Raleigh or Apex, it's from a private developer coming to us for rezoning and we say, you know, it'd be great if you had a condition where you had these two lots and donated it to a land trust. And they were like, yeah, I was just a buzz, just guess that. And we're like, cool. So one of those things. Like are there examples of that happening?
Well, the Huxley thing, I'm guessing that's how it happened, right? When we talk about Huxley, I don't think we-
Yeah, Presswicke and Huxley, the developer partnered with Raleigh Area Land Trust to meet the affordable conditions that we asked for.
But donating to the land trust wasn't part of the affordable condition, right? That came after.
No, no, that-
We had, we had an affordable condition that was generic and they said, I'm going to fulfill this by doing a land trust donation.
Well, yeah, they partnered with the nonprofit because I think we can have other situations. I think a previous development, Habitat was able to take advantage of the relationship and so then they were able to do the development. It just so happens in this particular instance, Raleigh Area Land Trust was who the developer decided to partner with, which really helped to make the, the affordability piece come to life, right?
All right, sounds good. Did you have anything? Okay. Councilman Killasworth, you ready?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion and move forward with this.
All right, I'll second.
Yeah, second, Ziegman. All right, any other discussion?
I'm sad that I'm not going to be kind of in the weeds on this as we come up next year, but I'm super excited this is moving forward.
All right, very good. Definitely exciting. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. All right, let's take a 10-minute recess, please. Yes, absolutely.
They additionally said that they're going to upgrade the facade to add more penetrations, exterior seating, planters landscaping, decorative concrete block exterior walls, stone and exterior tile accents with wheat pattern, faux windows with glass tile to match entrance windows, awnings, remove the pneumatic bank tube system, add patio floors, exterior ceiling fans and heaters, parking lot topped and restriped, and sidewalk replaced along perimeter of the site as needed for the new entrance, new exterior lighting and dumpster enclosure. So this project potentially could address several downtown plan goals, including attracting new restaurants, interweaving multifunctional public space of all sizes, and fill in gaps to provide a continuous pedestrian realm. The second proposal is for Scratch at 225 North Salem Street. This is an owner occupied restaurant in a retail building and no change to land use is proposed. The applicant identified the cost to be $506,920 and they're requesting a $250,000 facade grant, which is under the maximum in the 36-month period, but the reimbursement would need to occur in two budget years, is $200,000's the maximum in any one fiscal year. And I'm not going to go through the statement as the applicant was here to speak with you earlier today, but here are some renderings showing what the pergola could look like in the back. And so I just wanted to show those. And then this project could address several downtown plan goals. One is preserve the authentic by keeping the character while creating new memories, interweave multifunctional public spaces of all sizes, and connect the community with comfortable journeys and lively destinations. So happy to answer any questions you may have as best I can, and the folks from Scratch are here to answer questions if you have questions about their project.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Questions?
Quick question about the preauthorization component, and I appreciate you putting that in because I do know it's a fairly significant cost front-loading if they go get attorneys, do all the design work, and then come to us and we're like, nah, not so much. It's a big impact on that developer or on that building owner. But with regard to any of the facade, we, they're still going to have to be consistent with our zoning and our requirements with regard to our standards and still meet the definitions within the UDO as to what they're trying to do. So both La Farm and Scratch, their proposals still consistent with our UDO and our ordinances.
So we have not gotten a complete review because we don't have a complete application. However, at first blush, it appears that they're going in the right direction. We did actually work extensively with Scratch on the utilities that are in that area, and they actually did have to shrink down the size of their pergola somewhat because of the extensive utilities that were in the back. But yeah, there will be a full review and they will have to meet the UDO and all the requirements.
And are you imagining with the, the preapproval happens maybe tonight, and then the final approval is administrative with staff as long as they meet the program, or would it come back to the council again?
It would have to come back because it's an easement agreement. It's a legal document. It'll come back to you all.
It'll come back, okay.
Remind me what the annual budget is? Four hundred?
Well, you all didn't actually, yeah, Randy might probably be the better one to answer that.
So the, in the discussions, and this went to multiple committees, I think it was talked about in the Budget Committee, Planning Committee, and with council, we contemplated an application a year, so there was a $200,000 in everyone's mind, but there was not an actual line item put in for the $200,000 due to not knowing the timing of when the awards would happen. So it was just kind of understood that we would pull that from reserves when we had an application and depending on, because it is a reimbursement, not knowing what fiscal year that would be in, then we would make that allocation. So for planning purposes, we planned around $200,000 each year, but it was not line itemed in budget.
Yeah, you gotta see where the slippery slope is here, right?
I do have a question. It, both of them look like there are a lot of like seating arrangements, right? And one of the things that we made clear in some of the requirements that is, the seating is available for public use as well. So I want to make sure, because the pergola looks very closed off. It looks like it's only for Scratch people to be using that one. So if the public is able to use that, we want to make sure it's not just only seating for, you know, people that are in Scratch right now, you know? So same thing with La Farm, right? So it looks like it's very much like La Farm's seating here. So I don't know if there's a way to make it look like the public has more access to these things as part of this facade grant. Just comments on, on the way that the proposal's.
Understood.
I think you're identifying a tricky thing about this is that it's, even the previous grants, which were smaller, it's, it's for a public benefit, and also there is a kind of private benefit that's going on, and I think the seating will be for the customer. It's not for, it's not for park. Some of the, some of the ideas were outdoor seating that may be for anybody, but I don't think these were. But I think, and the Scratch person mentioned it is, you know, enhancing the whole area will, there is a public benefit in that way. There's a private benefit and a public benefit, and that's, that's the tricky part about this program, I think, that we should all kind of wrangle with is public good versus private good, and property value increases in activity in the area that I think, it's, I think undeniably that these, both these projects would increase the activity in the area a lot, in a, in a good way. But I, I don't, we didn't say it has to be like a, they had to create a park for everybody in the program.
No, we didn't, but it did say for the public benefit, and that, that was the, the, if you look back through the requirements of the facade grant, that's what it is for. That's his main purpose, is the public has use of it in some way, so.
All right, what's the wish, council? We got, oh, come on up, come up to the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having me. So half of, all you saw was half of, half of the project because that's all we had designed as of now. The other half is the other half of the Tobacco Mule Exchange Building, which will have an open fire pit, open to public, open to anyone to sit down. We wanted to take care of the, the front area that is a dirty, just dirt and mud, and in a, put a, a high-end astroturf area there that will have public seating. We currently have chairs out there that if you go by any morning, you'll see people sitting down, having coffee, sitting on the computer, on their phone, just enjoying it. And we want to increase that aspect and that accessibility to the, to the town and make it more of a gathering place as opposed to just, oh, there's a chair. We want to make it an inviting gathering place all around.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, we have three possible motions. Is there?
Do you, do you want us to take them up individually, or do you want us to do them all at once?
It would probably be best to do them individually.
Okay, just, just, that's, that's what I was kind of thinking, okay. So, motion to approve the preauthorization step to the Tier Three Grant process.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Next one.
See, we have, motion to, motion to, motion, motion to approve or provide preauthorization for Tier Three Grant proposals submitted by La Farm.
So are we coming to discuss these further, or?
Go ahead. We'll, we'll take the motion in a second, then.
I'll second, and then we can do the discussion.
All right, we got a motion second, discussion.
So I didn't jump in earlier because I thought we were just kind of doing questions, but I do agree with some of the comments that were made here, right? And so when we built the facade grant portion of, of, you know, of, or the Tier Three, the intent was really to, like, how do we broaden our downtown, right, and start including some of the adjacent areas, right, especially between Chatham Street and, and 55. And so in that context, I, I think the La Farm upgrade where it's basically taking a old unused building that's been sitting there for years, empty, and kind of addressing the blight in, in town, you know, seems to kind of fit that spirit, even though I agree with Councilmember Killings' word that the seating is not necessarily public seating, right, but to kind of start stretching our downtown into like a larger area, more towards the Justice Heights, you know, area that, that, you know, we've been striving to, I think, to me, has a clear public benefit, right, to attract or increase the attractiveness of, of that part of our downtown area, right, and attract, you know, other businesses, increase traffic, food traffic for some of the stores that are there already, right, because it's an area that doesn't get a whole lot of food traffic today. So that one, I, I can kind of get my head around in the spirit of how we designed the facade grant.
And I, I'll, I'll agree with that because I do think that the goal, when we came up with this idea, was how do we extend that, how do we extend Salem Street to try to bridge that gap between Tap Station and essentially Chatham Street? So this right here, I think, is a good way of kind of encouraging, and I hope more, more, more businesses are encouraged to take advantage of this program, because I know it's been a program we've had for, for a number of years, but, you know, most haven't taken, taken advantage for a variety of reasons, but puts us at least into a position to help provide a little bit more of a advertisement for this program, but also extend the street a little bit more towards, towards Williams. So, big fan.
All right, we have a motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you have something?
I, I comment. I, I just, my only nervousness is sort of hinting at what Arnold was getting at is, um, like, do we want to be in a place where every single facade project downtown is going to be funded 50% by this? Is that the intention? Because we approved two, are we going to have five next year, or 10 the year after? Like, it's a lot of money. So I think some debate about what the purpose is and the size and stuff is, is appropriate. That being said, these are two, you know, very well-qualified, exciting projects. I'm just kind of thinking big term and worrying about what might happen with the programs. We don't kind of, you know, we're pre-authorizing stuff and suddenly, well, we're out for 600K next year because that's what we pre-authorized, you know? We can't say yes to everything that costs our desk, is I guess the point I want to make.
Can I respond? As someone who's leading this council, I, I don't care as much about the slippery slope as you do. But second of all, you know, I, we have, we have, you know, you may recall in the Planning Committee, Terry, that we built in at least a vote on the Tier Three now, a preauthorization step to, you know, at least not have an automatic kind of approval-type process that may kind of escalate. And, and I'm not surprised that maybe the highest quality ones are the ones we were getting first, and, you know, who knows what's going to happen after that. Hopefully, they're all, all high quality, but, you know, that's, that step, there will be affirmative, and I guess two, two vote, two votes that will have to be affirmative to proceed with the future ones that may, you know, it may say, oh, you gave it to them, but not to us, and that would be, we can say, well, it's different projects, you know? It's different areas of town, different buildings that may lead to, I know, there may be unfairness that comes up, and that's, I think, a consequence of trying to make these investments, but that's why, that's why I see it.
All right, very well. Everybody good? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, unanimous. Next one. You want this one also?
Sure, I'll do it. The motion to provide preauthorization Tier Three Grant proposal submitted by Scratch.
Yes. Motion.
I'll second that.
Second. Yeah.
This one, I, I have a little bit harder time with, to, to be honest with you. This is an area of downtown that I think is already really, really active, you know, squarely within the part of downtown that's, that's, you know, already looks and kind of feels the way that, that we envision and, and want to broaden, right? And so the fact that the seating or, you know, part of the project is, is, is public use, but like, there's a large portion that is, that is not, I just have a little bit harder time with, with this one. You know, I know this is not the final approval, so I'll be glad to give a preapproval, but I think we also need to be careful that preapproval doesn't automatically imply final approval, right? Because that ultimately comes down to what are the final plans, what is the final cost to the town, you know, are UDO requirements being met and so forth, right? So I, I think that's, preapproval is one thing, but approval is different, and, you know, the businesses are taking a bit of a risk, you know, and going down the preapproval route and, you know, invest the, you know, kind of development money that we're asking them to, to invest in this. So I just wanted to kind of make that clear.
Are you suggesting a change in the, the map of the eligible parcels?
Hmm, no, no, not necessarily.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
And I think it's important to remind ourselves that, you know, as, if we feel as if things are getting out of hand, we have the authority to bring it in. The slippery slope is something that we can control.
I mean, I feel like these are both really good ideas, and, you know, I would respectfully request something other than astroturf, but, you know, I know that will be something that is discussed later on in the plans, so that's something to discuss then.
All righty. I just want to say thank you for bringing this up. I'm all about business, and I know you know what you need to keep moving forward, so if we can help, this is an opportunity for us to do that. Thank you.
Mayor, can I speak up? I, you know, I think maybe with the slippery slope argument and the concern about public versus private, sorry to not leave it on your, your thing, but I think some kind of, if we can get a report at some frequency from the planning staff that looks at like, maybe summarizes the projects when the final thing happens, and also like, maybe track some of the numbers as far as visitors or property value increases when those happen. I'm not sure, maybe it's too hard to do this and it's too indirect, but I think some way of looking at the cost benefit of these, of this program over time, especially if it gets bigger, maybe helpful for her future council to kind of, if they need, decide if they need to rein it in or not. And so maybe think about what would be in that kind of report, I think would be of value. If, if you can, if it's possible to summarize some of the numbers that come out of this, I think that'd be great. So that's just a comment for the future.
Any other comments? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we move now to New Business Seven, appointments, Planning Board, Chair and Vice Chair.
Okay, so New Business Seven is, we had a change in leadership. Tina Sherman had resigned, longtime Planning Board member, issued her resignation on August the 11th. The motion is to appoint Tim Royal as the Chair. He's been serving as Vice Chair, and then to confirm Keith Braswell as the Vice Chair for the remainder of calendar year 25.
Motion to approve?
Motion Ziegerman.
Second.
Second, again. Discussion.
I do want to thank Ms. Sherman for her service on this, on this vital committee. That's, it's a, it's, she's, she's been a credit to the, to the town, and we appreciate her efforts and understanding she's moving on to bigger and better things in terms of her overall path, but it's important that we do recognize and thank her for her service.
We will do that.
All right, we're good. All right, New Business Eight.
Do we need a vote?
I'm sorry. Yeah, we're moving fast. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that.
New Business Eight, so we've got two positions on the Board of Adjustment that are expired. We had an additional recruitment period. We've got five applicants. The mayor is recommending appointment of applicant three and four, so Robert Carmack for ETJ, and Tracy Taylor for the corporate limits for the two terms, both expiring December 31st, 2027.
All right, thank you so much. I would say Dr. Taylor has served on the Board of Adjustment. She's done very well. She continues to serve in that capacity, no issues that has been reported to me, so also the same as Robert Carmack. So tonight, I am nominating Tracy Taylor and Robert Carmack to the Board of Adjustment, consistent with our established process and precedent. I am presenting them as one slate. This is the complete recommendation I have for tonight. If the slate is not approved, I will have no other names to recommend at this meeting.
Mayor, make a, make a motion to separate these two nominations.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. I got a rule on that. So the names I presented is one slate, so there's no standing motion on the slate. So Robert rules, whoever Robert is, by the way, does not allow you to do that. So this, the, the nomination is for the slate of Tracy Taylor and Robert Carmack. If that is not the motion, I withdraw the nomination this time, and I have no names to present tonight.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
So in our Charter, Section 2-35, Division of Question, we have a provision in our Charter that says if a question or discussion contains several distinct propositions, the same shall be divided at the request of any member, and a vote should be taken separately, but motion, strike, and search will not be invisible. So we actually have a rule in our Charter specific to division like this.
At this time, I'm not going to allow that one. What I need to do is the Robert Rules of Order. Is there a manual?
Robert's Rules of Order apply when we don't have a rule which specifies otherwise. So because the town has an independent rule, Robert's Rules would not overrule the existing rule. I've said rule too many times, it's losing meaning.
But I, I don't have a recommendation tonight. I withdraw the recommendation, so I have no names to present.
We're, interesting moment here, because we have a second, a first, we have a motion and a second. Do we have that?
I have not ruled on a motion.
Well, but there's been, there's been a motion and a second. Do we have to, do we have to vote on that?
I, I presented two names, I recommended two names, and then stated if that slate is not, a motion is not to approve that slate, I withdraw those names, and I have no recommendations for tonight, and I'm done with that business.
Oh, no, I understand, I understand that there's been a, that, that withdrawal, but we have, we have a motion and a second out there. Either we vote it up or down on those motions, because it's, it's there.
But I have, I have no names to strike at this point. There are no names to strike, because I withdraw my recommendation.
So, point of order, I request that the council decide whether this point of order is, this motion is in order. So.
Let, let me ask a question. What, what is it that y'all have against Dr. Tracy Taylor for being on the Board of Adjustment?
Well, I'll say, I'll say.
It's not very personal.
I'll be happy to talk, I guess I didn't really want to because it's a resident, but as I said to you previously, there was a situation where there was a Board of Adjustment case on Holt Road that the residents who were involved with that case, in my opinion, and reading the transcript, were inappropriately hostile and questioned the integrity of our town staff. And I didn't like that because our town staff works hard, they get their integrity questioned all the time by our residents, and it's inappropriate. So when that happened, I read the transcript, Dr. Taylor supported them, as, as far as I could tell, and then there was a public forum speech that she gave, reiterating her support of these residents. So in my opinion, anyone who supports residents who are inappropriate to our town staff, for me, that was a, that was like a hard no after that. So I told you that previously, months ago, recommended you didn't nominate her, and here we are, but that was what I observed in this process, and I, I appreciate her service, but she supported these people who were inappropriate, and that's, that's how I saw it.
I, I want to respond to that. I, I do remember you sharing that with me, but I asked you for specifics and have not heard one. So, so she, she continues to serve on the Board of Adjustment. It's been seven, eight months. So if she's not fit to serve, why is she still there? I, I don't understand. So again.
She's overstated her term, unfortunately.
Absolutely. So she, hold up, I'm, I was still in my explanation. So she's still there at this point, and as I said before, I don't have any recommendations at this point.
Just to respond to your question as to why Dr. Taylor is still serving on the Board, that's because our current bylaws do not automatically remove a board member when the term expires. That has been changed per the new rules that we put in place for our boards earlier this year. We also said that those new rules would go into effect starting the new council, right, so starting with the swearing-in of council in December, right? So we kind of put a deferment on, on the effectiveness of, of that rule. So for the time being, right, no board member, or at least not on the Board of Adjustments, whose term has expired will automatically roll off. So that's why Dr. Taylor is still in the position, right? Come December, her term will expire, and she would automatically roll off because of the new rules put in place.
I appreciate you clarifying. I, I kind of knew that, but thanks for, thanks for putting it on the table.
Okay, then, can we not ask rhetorical questions if you know the answer? I mean.
I can, I can do that.
Okay, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Here, here's the deal. I have no names to present tonight for the Board of Adjustment. Thank you.
So motion, we have, we have motions on the table that have not been acknowledged, and that is directly violating Robert's Rules right now.
Where's the policy? Where's the policy on what you're recommending?
We all agreed to follow Robert's Rules. We have all been following Robert's Rules since we were elected to office and chose to serve on this council, and for some reason, this is a rule that you were choosing not to follow.
I don't have any names to recommend tonight.
Mayor, I make a motion that we suspend Robert's Rules for this case, 50C.
I'll second that.
I don't have any names to recommend tonight.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that carries.
Motion to appoint Robert Carmack to.
We're going to recess. I need, I need, I need to go to speak with an attorney.
ETJ position.
Or to go over memorandum of law. We're in recess until 9:30. I'm the chair. We're in recess.
And to.
We're in recess. So at this point, as the mayor is, I'm declaring a recess. We're in recess.
Laurie.
Laurie.
We're in recess.
Who's chairing the meeting right now? I'm sorry. Who's chairing the meeting right now? A individual council member or mayor cannot declare recess on their own. It requires a motion and a second, and a vote of the Board. However, typically, the mayor has been adjourned meetings or declared a recess without objection of the body. It seems here there is an objection of the body to the recess, so without a motion and a second to go into recess, it cannot be unilaterally declared by any one member. So right now, you have suspended the rules with respect to this matter of the Board of Adjustment appointments.
...
for them to self-select a chair and vice chair with the new members.
Do we need, possibly Robert, which was going to be the recommendation? Do we need him to be, to chair that meeting? Or is he the current chair? He's the current chair, okay.
Current chair, then I withdraw that motion. My motion then would be to appoint Robert Carmack as chair and to send back the decision for vice chair to the board for their recommendation.
Okay, I'll second that.
Call for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to go on recess?
Recession or closed session?
Closed session.
Closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Any further business to be brought before the board today? There apparently being none, all right, we are adjourned.